Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order. The regular school board meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen. The date today is Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Meyer?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Bardell?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Lee, here.
Thank you. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents and unleash their potential and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values in this district are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda is Agenda Approval: Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. Do I have a motion for Agenda Approval?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, seconded by John. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements: May thirteenth, Tuesday, seven p.m., regular school board meeting here in the community room. May twentieth, Tuesday, six p.m., is the school board work session here in the community room. May twenty-sixth, Monday, no school. May twenty-seventh, Tuesday, seven p.m., is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mister Chair Members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay. This time, any citizen or employee may address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration to follow up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come before the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to move forward the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Missy, seconded by Laura. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. All's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. All right. Next on our agenda is Acknowledgement and Contributions. Guess I should read it first before we have a motion, right? Acknowledgement and Contributions: Whereas Minnesota's statute one-twenty-three B-oh-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen that the school board accepts with much appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred, eighty dollars. Detailed background: A donation, three hundred and fifty dollars was made to North Park Elementary by Financial One for Supplies for Music Program. A donation of three thousand dollars was made to Valley View Elementary by Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club for a sound system for the gym. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund: Bill Struff, five hundred dollars; Malcolm Watson, one thousand, five hundred dollars; Albert Ogde, fifty dollars; Diane Katz, fifty dollars; Marlo Hammerston, one hundred dollars; Dean and Joy Bliss, one thousand dollars; Leroy Kopp, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars; Robert Benson, one hundred dollars; Karma Deggie, one hundred dollars; Janet Larson, fifty dollars; Pam Segertson, one hundred dollars; Glenda Glor, fifty dollars; Constance Hanson, twenty-five dollars; Gordon Olson, two hundred dollars; Wayne Kutske, fifty dollars; Roger and Karen Sidlowski, one hundred dollars; Robert U., twenty-five dollars; Anne Farnham, two hundred dollars; Jane Swineheart, one hundred dollars; Harlan Downing, fifty dollars; William Caverly, one hundred dollars; Paula Hall, fifty dollars; Andrea Cowell, thirty dollars; Edward Rapp, one hundred dollars; Ann O'Neil, one hundred dollars; Ronald Margot, fifty dollars; Gerald Bolt, twenty-five dollars; Cheryl Blinkman, twenty-five dollars; Catherine McAvoy, fifty dollars; Nance Nancy Hornbrook, one hundred dollars; Patricia Johnson, fifty dollars; Mary Lee Olin, one hundred dollars; Thomas Mulligan, five hundred dollars; Janet Vaughn, one hundred fifty dollars; Gail Hubel, twenty-five dollars; E. Paul Terry, one hundred dollars; Kathleen Kane, one hundred fifty dollars; Patricia Sawada, fifty dollars; Dean Miley, fifty dollars; Midwest Vending, two hundred fifty dollars; Michelle Edwardson, fifty dollars; Carl Lightbody, one hundred dollars; Gene Heistercamp Richards, fifty dollars; Heather Swinney, fifty dollars; Jennifer Blake, fifty dollars; Heather Kopp, fifty dollars; Joy Belicius, twenty-five dollars; Laura Martenson, thirty dollars; Robin Rice, ten dollars; Laura Craig, thirty dollars; Marcia Bergman, forty dollars; Regina Scoy, thirty-five dollars; and cash from Highland employees, one hundred fifty-five dollars. Value and Kind: Donation of a Microwave Oven to North Park Elementary from Alita Abdullah, estimated value of one hundred dollars. Donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary and Columbia Heights High School from Ann Bechtowitz, estimated value one hundred dollars. Total fiscal year, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen monetary contribution to date, forty-four thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars, fifty-one cents. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ted, seconded by Laura. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Meyer?
Aye.
Lanier?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Bardell?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lee, aye.
Very good. Resolution is passed. All right. Reports from members of the board is our next Agenda Item. Board members will and can report on board activities since last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. So this evening, I will start with Missy. That's okay?
Yeah. Um, I attended the State School Board Meeting, and we went over numerous things. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with all of it, but there's a lot of the bills and resolutions that have moved, and I've got all the information in here and what I could do. I could give it to the superintendent, and she can maybe put it in you guys' packet. Would that be okay? And then, some of the things in it, one of it that I'm going to put in here is the new bullying bill and the legal writing of it. So that's updated in here. Also, like I say, the different... So I'll definitely put this and give it to Don and move that forward. The other thing that I wanted to share with the board is that we had a presentation by a source, and I'm just going to give this information. It's called Precious Status. I already talked to Brian, and said I would get him that information. But it's an app that is used in a lot of schools, and it was just really interesting, and it was endorsed by MSBA. So I just thought you guys would like to get some information and some... Because it can not only be used in schools, but it can be used individually, or businesses, or, you know, whatever, and it's very reasonably priced. It's just, I just thought it was very interesting for our technology part. And then, we also went over a lot of things regarding communication, the new website, the NSBA Leadership Conference. We talked about that. Also, we did our Executive Director's Evaluation. So those were some of the highlights of that. Then also, here in town, I attended some of the events that were happening around the district, which was prom event, the Mott Car Crash that was held, and I went out with all the students, walked with them out to the scene of the accident. And it was really very interesting and very well done. So thank you very much to the City of Columbia Heights, the Police Department, DMTs, Fire Department, that were all on hand, working with the students and educating them on what can happen when drinking and driving, especially on prom night, what can happen. And it was really interesting, because the kids were all kind of talking until the sirens started. And when those sirens came, and then they uncovered those cars, it was dead silence. And it was impactful for the kids, and it was very, very important. Afterwards, then I attended the MAD Discussion, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, which they had a gentleman come in and speak about his daughter, who had been killed to a drunk driver. Also, really interesting that the kids listened, and then Ann started asking him questions about himself. Somebody said, "Well, why would they ask questions?" Because it really made it real for them, that it was a person, and they wanted to know who he was. And so the kids were very, very respectful and very interested in the situation. Attended Grand March. Boy, do our kids clean up well. They had beautiful gowns, ball gowns, and the kids just looked amazing, and again, were so respectful and had such a nice time. And it was just really, it was really good to see them have so much fun and know that they're gonna... Some of these kids, this is their last prom, and their heartfelt goodbyes to it was just, it was just kind of a lot of fun. And thank you to the staff, because they really put on a party, so... And they do very well for the students, so thank you again. Which brings me back to something that I would like to bring up. One of the things that did concern me is we have no after-prom event. And that is concerning when the kids are all leaving, a downtown St. Paul event and driving. And it would just be nice if maybe... Ted, I know you're real involved with the PTO, and might be something that we could start a discussion on again, maybe? Because I think it's, I know a lot of schools bring them in on buses and then bring them back out to an event. This way, it keeps them away from anything that, those events that we saw, which are car crashes and stuff. And it keeps twenty zillion kids out of my house at twelve-thirty at night. I also attended some track and field meets, which were very good, and good to see a lot of people involved in that. Sorry, that was my phone going off. A lot of kids involved and a lot of support from the community. So that's it for me.
Very good. Laura, you want to go next?
Sure. Well, pretty mu... I didn't actually have all that busy of a week. I attended the work-study session last week, as I believe all of us did. And then I also attended the Principal Forum.
All right. Thanks. Lori?
Yeah, too. I was at the Principal Forum. It was great to see how well it was attended and the insight, and just listening to the candidates and their answers to the questions was very interesting, and it was, like I said, it was really well-attended, so... And then I was at the school board work session, and then meetings with a couple fellow, one of my fellow board members. So thank you, John and Scott, for your time. And I attended the Hilltop City Council meeting last night. That's my report.
Great.
I also attended the work session, and I think I mentioned we were going to take a tour at North Park at last school board meeting, but we actually did take the tour.
Oh, yeah. I took the tour.
Member Palmer, too. Had a great time, and thank you so much for Principal Sasek for showing us around. What really struck me is how well the learning studio concept is working at North Park and how well the students have adapted to the new learning studio as we keep building learning studios to accommodate this learning approach. Also attended the WMEP Board Meeting last week. It was probably the most attended board meeting I've ever been to. There was hundreds of people there, just expressing support for the fair schools and really giving input to the board about what fair has meant to them. So there is another meeting this Thursday, a work session, that I'll be attending to further discuss the strategic future of WMEP and how to move forward. They are losing their super... We are losing the superintendent at the end of June, so he's retiring. So there's a time to reflect here. Also attended the Sister Cities Art Show. Actually, I helped set up the show. Very impressive artwork, as usual, from our students. And thank you to Sister Cities for hosting that competition again this year. I think it's the third annual. And also attended a senior all-night party meeting. I just want to mention, there is going to be a highway cleanup this Saturday. They're going to help fundraise with the Lions Club together. So if anyone wants to help with that, support the senior all-night party in the Lions, it's nine o'clock at Merson Hall. Also attended a Lions meeting last night, talked to the city manager for Columbia Heights, and had some good discussion, and actually mentioned possibly getting together again between the city council and the school board. It's been a long time, and it'd be great to try that again and build some rapport and relationships, or continue to build on those. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast and discussing the summary of the legislature, or the session so far. A lot of talk about education and business partnership and workforce development, and the need to prepare graduates so that they can enter the workforce and be successful there. And businesses want that as well. There's a PTO meeting tomorrow night. I will mention the after-prom event, and would invite any high school parents to come at six o'clock in the Media Center. Looking forward to Phase Four Training this Saturday for MSBA. And also attended a softball game last night, girl softball.
Great. Thanks. John?
I don't know if I'll do them in correct order, but I was, as an employee of the City of Columbia Heights, I was able to participate in the Mott Car Crash, and I'll echo Missy's thoughts on... You know, it's, even for the people that I work with, when we go on something like that, it gets us thinking as well. But the kids were, they were really quiet, they were paying attention. I mean, as were, I mean, I was the one that dragged the alleged, you know, dead girl out of the car, and we were literally inches away from the tape where the kids were. I mean, it was, it was, it always is. I mean, this isn't the first time that we've done this, and the impact, I don't think, is any different this time, but it always seems to be significant for the kids. I also was able to attend the presentation by the gentleman that talked about his daughter being killed by a drunk driver. And again, I was also impressed with, number one, his story, but the students in that auditorium that, you could tell they were listening. And the questions that they asked were some, you know, it, I think it was, I know we don't do it every year, I think it's every other year, or I don't know how often, but I think the kids really walked away from there, hopefully with the right message that it's just not worth it making those choices. So whoever organizes that up here, you know, kudos to them, because we enjoy being a part of it as a fire department, but I think it's very, it has a huge impact on the kids. So I got to do that. I was, I attended, Valley View had their carnival. Principal Ford let me run the clicker for a while as we were counting people coming in. He was pretty protective of that, but it had a huge turnout and just lots of really fun things. And it was, even as it was coming to the end, people were still pouring into the building. So I think that, I'm assuming that was a big success for them, but if you judge it by the number of people, it certainly was. As Member Palmer mentioned, I attended the work session. I was fortunate enough to be able to sit on one of the interview panels for the principal selection. I have never been and never want to be involved in a process like that. There was so many, I mean, to sit in, and I don't know the exact numbers, but the group that I sat on, there was eighteen or nineteen people?
You were at about twenty.
Twenty, okay. Asking questions, sort of have one person sitting and having to respond, and that was just one of the several pieces that they had to go through. So we had a lot of really good candidates that came through the door. So I was thankful to be able to part of that. I also attended the Principal Forum up here, and again, was impressed with the support, some of the questions that came forward, and how the candidates responded and answered their questions. I was at Columbia Academy yesterday for their proud presentation, and it's done every time, but one of the things, I guess it was maybe more noticeable this time, because it's more towards the end of the year, but Principal Blessman shows each of the grade levels where they're at for not only their As and their Bs, but where the kids are struggling as well, and not just where they're at today, but here's where you were first quarter, here's second quarter, and showing the growth. And it's, they do a nice job with letting the kids know where they've been, where they're at, and where they need to be as well. So really enjoyed being a part of that. I, just before our meetings this evening, I've seen a couple of JV baseball games, but tonight, right before this one, the Columbia Heights JV team won, was a one-point win over St. Anthony. It was a very exciting game, went right down to the last inning. The kids played great, and it was the first game that they've had that there wasn't high winds, cold temperatures, rain, and threatening snow. So it was actually, it was actually enjoyable to be watching that today, so... And, what's that?
The wind and the snow and...
Yeah, it was last week. It was miserable, so... So then they're working, I know, in conjunction with Columbia Academy with their baseball team, and you can tell the kids have gotten outside to practice some, because they're, they seem to be starting to hit their stride. So it was fun to watch. The only other thing I have is just a reminder, since we don't have a meeting next week, the fundraiser that's going to be taking place April thirtieth, Clean, Fed, and Warm, thank you, guys, at the Public Safety Building, that's eight-two-five, forty-first Avenue. The hours are from five to eight, and that's a huge collaborative effort between not only public safety, but the schools and actually other agencies that are coming in from the outside. There's going to be anything from drug-sniffing dogs, laser-shooting down in the range. They have the, we have, we'll have a kitchen fire simulator, which is, as many times I've seen it, is always impressive. They actually put a little bit of water on a burning flame in a pan, and so lots of fun things to do. The way it's...
Kitchen's on, huh? Wow. Okay, no.
Don't try this at home.
That part was not necessarily fun. That's another, that's another prop, I'll call it, but it's very impactful when people see it, because I don't think people, I mean, we just had a kitchen fire in Heights last night, and it was a same-or-similar situation to what this trailer simulates, which is they actually start a pan of grease on fire, and they reach in with a long pour, hole, and they pour one cup of water into a pan of grease, and the entire room is engulfed in flames. And if you were the person standing there trying to put out a grease fire with that cup of water, you can just imagine, you know, the impact it would have. So it, again, it's a good visual for people to see. But that's just one of many things that are there, scheduled for nice weather. There'll be fire truck rides on the old fire truck. It's a ten-dollar donation, twenty dollars for a family, bring in, they're supposed to, they can bring canned goods and stuff for SECA, correct? Okay, so they can bring that. And the money is all going to a really good cause, which is to be able to provide for all students in the City of Columbia Heights the ability to be clean, warm, fed, and warm. I'll get it right by next week, so... Anyway, so come on down, it should be a really big event. It's always been a real successful thing for us in the past, so I'm working with SECA on that one. Okay, and I'm done.
All right. Great. Thanks, John. I also was privileged to be on the selection committee for the principal, down to the last three candidates, essentially, and very interesting. I agree with John quite the process. I'm not sure I would have done as well as those candidates did, for sure. And I was also at the candidate forum for a little while, and again, agreed with people who were there, that the questions were good, and the candidates both did a fabulous job, so kudos to them. I'll just report briefly on the last association I met, probably the school district meeting on April eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. And we had Senator Melissa Wicklund there. She's from Bloomington, Richfield area. And she talked about a number of things. I'm just going to focus on things that affect schools. She mentioned that there are bills pending, Senate Budget Bill for Education, additional monies, the Senate version, one-hundred-and-forty-one million, House version, seventy-five million. With the Senate budget, early childhood was half the amount, ECFE was Funding Increases, School Readiness, money for that, and ten million dollars was allocated to teacher evaluation. Again, this is just a bill. And then also in the bill, ELL funding for six years instead of five years. And I think that was on the order of six million dollars. They had money for Reading Corps, reduced-priced lunches, and free breakfast for kindergarten. There was also, she mentioned briefly, an education policy bill talking about the ELL policy and the Special Odd Task Force, and MDE, and the, MDE is required to report the early childhood scholarships, so... And Missy covered the rest, and she'll have the rest of the bills that actually passed and not to repeat it here, so that's my report. Mr. and Mrs. Kelly?
Mister Chair Members, as Scott said, I was also at the AMSD Board of Directors meeting, and it really is just three weeks to the end of session. It's hard to believe that they're almost done, and we're almost done with the school year, and it must, and it's spring outside besides, so very interesting meeting. I think I reported out, but I wanted to mention again that we did have our quarterly WMEP Superintendent Meeting, and there were really only two items on the agenda. One was the strategic design and leadership model for WMEP in the future, and we were charged, the superintendents, to bring that back to our respective boards to begin the discussion on what our commitment is and what are some of the propositions and the models for WMEP. And that occurred at our last school board work-study session. And the other was kind of bittersweet. WMEP has decided that they will not be doing their summer school enrichment program for this year. That's on pause. And that was primarily for students who attended from other districts, but they felt that the money would be better spent somewhere else, so they have closed that down. For us, since we have an expansive summer school program for our students, it's not as much a loss as it might be in other districts, but I can't speak for them. Director Holmgren and Burkus and I will be attending the next WMEP study session, just to hear the report for ourselves, and that is, I believe, that's Thursday, Ted.
Thursday, correct.
Very good. We had an Incident Command Meeting with the Columbia Heights Fire Department. District Directors will be integrating this information into our crisis management process. And I want to say special thanks to Fire Chief Gary Gorman for making the information available to us, and Deputy Chief John Larkin was also in attendance, and really gave us pause on who we needed to send to the teams, who they might need on their teams, and if we send somebody, who was going to fill in that spot on ours. So a lot of thought-provoking kind of chain of events, kinds of things. So thanks for getting us started on that. District Administration met with the city planning staff on educational and zoning issues, and that, it was wonderful meeting their new staff, and they said that they would come out and take a tour of the district a little bit later, so they have two brand-new staff, because Scott Clark is, he may be retired by now, I think it was like a week or two.
Friday is his last day.
Was it Friday?
This coming Friday.
This coming Friday? So District, Director Burkus and Hennekenz and Dennis Cheeseborough were in this room last night, conducting a really powerful focus group around college and career readiness and the skill sets that you've all seen, and then the technology implementation plans. They gave us wonderful feedback, which we will share with you on that. And the sun was shining when they came in, and it was dark when they left, but they really did stay for the full two hours, and we look forward to sharing all of that with you. Great night. I have to say that prom was, again, I agree with Missy, just a spectacular event again this year. The theme was Great Gatsby, which was one of my personal favorites, and the kids looked so wonderful. I didn't have the opportunity to go to the Grand March, but I did stop in at the Crown Plaza in downtown St. Paul. It was at the top of the, of the building, and that, and the room rotates. So they had beautiful views, and they all looked so grown up and sophisticated, and it was, it was great. It warms my heart every year to see that. So I too want to say special thanks to the students, because there were students that were involved in the planning, to the staff, to the parents, and the administration who made it all possible. It was a great night. And today, I had a great time. I started out with a meeting at the high school, and then moseyed on down to Valley View Elementary for a site visit, where I was there till noon. And it was very nice with Principal Ford, as part of the principal evaluation process, we get a chance to sit down and talk about issues and concerns in the building. But while I was down there, they're conducting their MCAs, and it was just nice to see how well-oiled and organized and how strategic they were being in their security. Director Burkus was down there checking up to make sure security was perfect, and I have to say that even I, as the superintendent, in order to observe the classrooms in session, had to sign a protocol piece of paper, so they could put it on file, so they were on their game, Director Burkus. Staff was on top of it, and the students were really engaged, and good apples for treats as well. So I think that concludes my report for the evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, I forgot one thing. Thanks to all of you who either called me, met with me, or conducted meetings with me over the past two weeks. Thank you.
All right.
I forgot one thing, too. I finished my, I've been trying to tour the WMEP schools, and I finally finished it this week with the downtown schools, so it's been great to meet the staff and just see what the facilities are like there.
You know, I have one question on that. Did you get a chance to see their learning studios up on third floor?
I did, yeah.
Are they similar to ours? Would it be worth a trip over? Because Director Burkus and I were kind of thinking, maybe we should go over and see. They're not a lab school anymore, but we were wondering if there was something we should explore.
The difference I saw was there are some glass partitions where students go and have their class sessions, but then they're allowed to come out and... but then they're allowed to come out into the, the, the middle and work and learn.
Okay.
And there's tables and so forth, so they move in and out.
So it's a, and it's a high school setting?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Great, next on our agenda this evening is, uh, district family involvement programming. Uh, the board this evening will present, be presented with information on district's family involvement programming. And tonight we have Dwayne Burkus, Director Teaching and Learning, Nicole Hollaby, Director Student Services, Kristen Sunkel, Director Community Education, Jane Reardon, ELL Family Involvement Coordinator.
You guys got enough chairs? Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Proud to be here with my colleagues, Director Hollaby, Director Sunkel, and Teaching and Learning Coordinator for English Learners and Family Involvement, Jane Reardon. I, again, get the luxury of kind of sitting back and, and letting Jane and the other two directors do all the work here, but I, I did want to take it, uh, just a moment to introduce the presentation. And as you know, um, family involvement is, I don't need to tell you this, this is an essential component of what we do. Student success depends on strong collaboration between schools and parents. Over the last two years, the district has really tried to work on developing a deliberate process of working with families. We know that we have families, uh, who come from multiple cultures, languages, many of them hold multiple jobs. Uh, all of them though, uh, have those dreams for their children that, that we have, that they succeed, that they do well in life. So how do we as a district, uh, communicate well? How do we partner with them? Uh, tonight, uh, you'll get a presentation that tries to give an overview of what's going on across the district. Each principal that has come has talked specifically about what they're doing in their buildings. But as a district, we believe that it's also important for us to collaborate amongst departments, amongst buildings and district, and also to be strategic. So what is it that works? How do we, uh, collaborate well with parents? So we want to just, uh, give you that tonight, an overview of many, many different things that are going on. So in, if you could just, uh, click on the next slide, again, our mission, uh, to create worlds of opportunity for every learner's, obviously, there's so much that involves, uh, families with that. And in the next slide, really, I, I think tonight, as you listen to this presentation, the core values that really will come out, I believe, are community, that it does take a village, and we know that it, it's more than what any one person can do in this day and age to raise a child well, and that it's collaboration, it's that working together. So, um, with that, I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Jane, who will start the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Dwayne. Um, Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. Certainly there have been a lot of activities surrounding family involvement in Columbia Heights for many years. And as a formal program, we've tried to be really thoughtful and collaborative as we create a structure. And so one of our first things that we did was create a mission statement. And it reads, "All Columbia Heights Public Schools will actively engage families and support their participation in our educational partnerships to improve student achievement." Additionally, um, we have philosophy statements that come out of an evaluation tool that I'll talk about in a little bit, but I just want to take a minute to read them to you. "We believe that when parents are active participants in school activities, they are more knowledgeable and more effective in promoting the value of school. We believe that when parent involvement is student-centered, academic achievement increases, and needs for behavior interventions decrease. We believe that when schools communicate effectively with families, parents are more knowledgeable about their students' academic and social emotional progress. We believe that purposely fostering positive relationships with families builds trust and encourages parents to be active participants in their child's education. And finally, we believe that when parents collaboratively, collaboratively partner with schools, student engagement, student achievement, and school pride all increase. As a program, we are basing our family involvement on researched best practices that comes out of leading research facilities for family involvement in the nation. So the Harvard Family Research Project, and the National Network of Partnership Schools out of Johns Hopkins. So both of these have extensive resources to support schools and districts in, in family involvement. So secondly, we needed to create a structure that was collaborative, but that also facilitated communication between the district level and school level. So I'm just going to walk you through our structure for, for a moment. So at the top, you can see the District Family Involvement Team, so that meets once a quarter, and it involves, uh, myself and the family involvement specialists, liaisons, and then teachers from the schools, some admin and parents as well. And we take the requirements of Title One as part of our charge. And additionally, a program evaluation that I talked about, and I'll, and I'll get more to that in a moment, but sort of like a vision card, basically, so we, we use those. And so building committee leadership comes together for the district, and then they go back to the buildings and have monthly meetings where they meet with parents, I think, probably every third month or so, and plan activities for the, for the buildings. And their activities are based around that bottom layer. And those are really focus areas or goals that they choose as a committee that they're going to base their family involvement activities around. So you can see that there's literacy goals, math goals, um, social emotional, or, um, building initiatives as well. So they, they, they want to be responsive to what it is that their schools and parents need. So kind of keeping in mind that bottom layer, they would insert one of those goals into the middle of this flower. And so, and there's six types of family engagement, and that comes out of the Johns Hopkins research. So every activity that they do, they want to keep in mind the area of focus that they are working towards. And then these six different types of family involvement, how are they, how are they hitting all of those with the activities that they're doing? So I'm just going to give you two examples. So Valley View chose as their area of focus or goal a literacy goal. So that was based out of what the school wanted, what Principal Ford wanted, what the parents were asking for, was improving reading scores. So then, as you can see, they chose activities that supported that. So the top one is a parenting goal, so they had African, African-American family night, and talked to parents about how to support reading at home, or what their parents can do to support reading at school. And if you go down the, the dial a little bit, it says volunteers for take-home books. One of the six components of family involvement is volunteering, so they had a, an activity where every child at Valley View got a book. So they had to coordinate that with all parent volunteers. The high school chose as their area of focus, creating a climate for family involvement, improve family involvement. So at the top, um, the eighth grade parent night was really falls into the, again, that parenting type of family involvement. And then, um, the Heights to Homes is, and collabor- or, excuse me, PTO is collaborating with the community. So really, any activity would probably hit more than one type of family involvement, but this is, we were trying to be really thoughtful and, and structured about it. And making sure that their activities are well balanced. Um, so one of the other things that we have done is really some of the funding to schools.
And I'm just going to jump in a little bit here, because this is tied really to our funding stream, which it comes from Title One. So there are regulations, uh, that we have funding available for family involvement. One of the things, though, that we had found was that some of the things that we've been doing have been in place a long time. We hadn't really been changing it up very much, or really looking at, do we need to try something different? So with Jane now, uh, in her role as a coordinator, um, her emphasis has been, we know we need to have this research base, and, but we also need to push ourselves to be innovative, to think outside that box. So with that, we worked on, uh, finding a way that we could encourage that innovation through basically what we're calling mini grants, where teachers in their parent involvement committees could come up with ideas, come up with a proposal, submit that proposal to, uh, Jane and her team, and from that have access to some dollars through Title One to promote some of the kinds of activities that, uh, they, they think might just work. So it was a way to, to have some seed money, to be able to say, okay, here, uh, is a chance for you to try something that might cost some money, but we want to see what your idea is first, and we want you to have some thought, put some thought into it ahead of time. So the first year, uh, took a little while to, I think, for people to, to catch on, uh, and this year it's really taken off. And, uh, I think Jane has some examples for you of some of those activities.
Right, I do. And last year, we've now allocated twice as much money as we did this year as we did last year. So as Dwayne said, people really have kind of caught on to having great ideas. So the buildings have done just an incredible amount of work, both specialists, liaisons, teachers and parents. And so I just want to highlight a couple, um, couple activities. The It Takes a Village Day was from Columbia Academy, and that was really about, um, um, students recognizing adults in their lives that had helped make a difference, and then they went to the variety show. Um, KPEG, if you'll see in the second column, is the kindergarten parent engagement group, and that was two teachers who stayed, I think they ran like a six-week program for their kindergarten parents, and it was kind of a kindergarten orientation for parents. And they brought them snacks and provided childcare, and, um, so again, really innovative and responsive to what their school needed. Highland was the KPEG, and Highland also, um, did math take-home games. So a learning at home activity where they went, they bought all these supplies and made games, and gave them to parents along with directions of how to play these games with their kids at home. And finally, Family Tech Nights comes out of North Park, which is then directly supporting that building initiative of Twenty First Century Learning and the Learning Studios. So how are they connecting their family involvement activities to, to what their building needs and wants? Those are some of the building activities happening. We also have district-wide family involvement activities. One of the main focuses is our REACH classes, which, um, we're now in our third year of. And so REACH is a six-week curriculum for parents, which is focused on college and career readiness at any level. And we received a, a very basic curriculum, and then had to localize it to each school and each level. And so it's six weeks, they get transportation, childcare, and dinner. And at the end of those six weeks, they have a graduation ceremony, which is pictured up in the right hand. So over these three years, we have about a hundred and seventy-six graduates. And those are the schools that we've been at, we've now been able to return to Columbia Academy for our second time. So we also want to be really thoughtful about how we're collecting data and how we're reflecting and refining. So for every week, and we evaluate how we're doing. So these are just some of the comments from parents as we survey them. And then we also give them a really simple, how helpful was this information? So this comes, the next few sides are the three different elementary schools. Over the three years, this is the parent's response to how helpful was this information for each week. So the first topic is establishing collaboration. You can see almost eighty percent found it really helpful. The second week. So we feel like we are giving the parents from REACH the information that they want to know, and that they feel like they can go and use it. One of our other activities is, once a month, we have parent breakfasts here in the community room and in the training room. We've been able to partner with, uh, different community organizations and the University of Minnesota. Um, those are some of the topics that we've had, and it's just a nice connection to REACH. It's a lot of, it comes from what REACH parents ask for, if they want additional information on something. Um, and then it's also just a different time of day, so if they can't make an evening, this is in the morning. We get a lot of moms at this one, actually, their little ones. And, and this year, we also have started the home visit program. We started a pilot at North Park and Columbia Academy, and then teachers at Valley View and Highland are doing it voluntarily as, as they're, as their interest allows. Um, we had St. Paul Parent Teacher Home Visit Project come in and do a training here in the community room. And by the end of the year, we will have approximately done approximately two-hundred-and-fifty home visits. So each of the teachers that were trained did a visit in the fall, and then they'll do a follow-up again in the spring. Also at the district level, we have two positions that are focused exclusively on parent involvement. So our first parent involvement specialist is Yvonne Padilla, who's six twelve, so she goes between Columbia Academy and high school. And her focus really is Latino families, so she does a lot of question answering about how to navigate the school system, and, you know, basic questions, because language is a barrier. She's increased the use of School View with the high school by about thirty percent. So additionally, she helps with those district-level, um, family involvement activities, so REACH and the breakfasts. And is on, serves on the building, both buildings, building-level committees. So Heights to Homes was something that they did this year, which involves, um, staff from the high school going out to different places in the community to meet parents in, in the community. And Dillard is K-12 Parent Involvement Specialist, so she, her focus is Choices Yours families, and she works a lot with our African, African-American families. So her day, even though her title is the same as Yvonne, they have very different-looking days because of the populations that they work with. So her work is really reaching out to families and contacting them, and going to where they are, um, to involve them. So it looks really a little different than Yvonne's does. She's also involved in the district-level activities, REACH, and does Heights to Homes, and then has started a Champion Parent Program this fall, or this spring.
Um, in the, uh, Chairman Bardell, and members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, um, in the area of early childhood special education, as I've, um, stated before, in this district, we serve babies, brand newborn babies, um, all the way up to, um, adults. So, uh, in the early childhood special ed area, all of our staff do home visits to every single family once a month, minimum, um, depending on their needs. Some of our staff, uh, for the babies that, um, the families don't bring in, they go every week into the home. And they work with the parents on parenting, on getting them resources. And of course, I always love to go there because they get to play with cute babies too, so. Um, family education, as I said, they run parenting classes in the home and here. Um, and then they do assessment to help give information to doctors, doctors give information to us, and it's really a comprehensive programming, working with nurses and doctors and our special ed staff to make sure that developmentally the kids are on the right track. Um, regarding the liaisons, we have a cultural liaison, Victoria Camperverde in the Placement Center, and, um, she enrolls every new student that comes into this district. She also, um, assists, um, the ELL department with testing, um, with, uh, kids who are ELL, English Second Language. Um, she does all the registration, and she also follows up with families for the first six weeks if they have any needs, um, in our district, to make sure that all their needs are being taken care of. As well as we have an urban liaison in every building in the district, and that urban liaison does lots of home visits. Um, they go into the home, if the parent feels more comfortable getting questions answered in the home, they encourage strongly families to come into school, to come to parent teacher conferences, uh, to attend activities. Uh, they work with kids to get involved in after-school athletics and activities, um, some of the kids that normally wouldn't get involved in those activities. And they also attend meetings, like IEP meetings, if the parent would feel more comfortable with one of the liaisons being their representative or advocate. being their representative or advocate. So, and they daily, daily, daily make calls home, not only with concerns and issues, but also with positive kudos to say, hey, I saw, you know, little Jimmy in the hall today, and he's really having a great day. So they're really an important part of our district and of our buildings in working with our families.
Good evening. In community education, we have a number of different ways in which we involve parents. On our Community Advisory Council, we have parent representatives. On our 21st Century Grant Advisory Council, we also have parent representatives. And then in our Early Childhood Program, and that's what I'll speak more about this evening, we have a parent advisory council in that. And they are the ones that really organize that end-of-the-year picnic, which I'm going to put a plug in now for. It's next Thursday on May 1st at 5:30 to 7:30. And that's here in the Family Center. It's a great opportunity for our young families to come and celebrate the close of the school year. So we have a number of ways in which we involve parents in our early childhood programs. Naturally, we believe that parents are the first and most important teacher of their children. And so we do, through ECFE, have our Licensed Parent Educator, who does the parenting groups. We also have home visits available for any of the families in our Columbia Heights Public Schools. And then our teachers do special family involvement activities. We do home visits with our ECFE for EL families to get to know them at the beginning of the year. And then we have activities throughout the year. And with our pre-K program at North Park, Highland, and at the Family Center, we've really enabled the teachers to find ways to engage their parents. And some of the activities that they've done just this year, they had an open gym night, a sledding and pizza party, garden night. And that was in the early fall, where they were out in Blooming Heights. They had pajamas, ice cream, and books. Ice cream and books at Highland. Fine Arts Night at Highland and North Park. And many times, the pre-K teacher is looking at, what are the parent involvement activities that are happening at the elementary school? And are those appropriate for our pre-K students? And when they are, then that becomes that month's family involvement activity. Movie nights at North Park, back-to-school nights at Highland and the Family Center, and then a threes parent day in class. So those are just a few of the ways in which our early childhood families are being included. Thank you.
So finally, we have recently worked on creating an evaluation to see how we are doing with family involvement. So where are we and where do we want to go? And what can we do to get better? And what concrete steps can we take to get better? So we just have, it's a really new working document that we just created in our committee. And it's based on those five measurements. And I'll connect those back to actually our philosophy statements from earlier. And again, it's aligned with the research base, best practices. And our next steps really are developing the information gathering tools. So now we have this rubric, how are we really going to get the information? So the first component of the rubric is participation. And you'll see that the first philosophy statement is embedded there. And so what we're looking at doing is, how do we get from wherever any school is or the district is? We want to get to high performing. So we need to look at ways now of how are we going to measure that? And then what concrete steps can we take to get there? So we certainly want to make sure that all of our family involvement is student-centered, centered around academic achievement. That we have really clear, transparent, friendly communication with our families. And it's accessible for everybody. It's really our vision of what does that really high-performing school in the area of communication look like? In the area of relationships, meaningful relationships, partnerships? And in the area of collaboration? So as I said, this is a working document. So we'll be working on that tool in the upcoming year. So that's a part of what's next. So we'll be working on the tool for measuring. We'll continue to refine and reflect on REACH and really all the aspects of our program. We want to keep refining and keep making it better. Continue to support any district or school initiatives with parent involvement. If you think about the iPads down at Columbia Academy, how are we getting, as that grows, how are we getting parent involvement growing around that? And a really clear message from the committee was that we want professional development for our staff around positive proactive relationship-building contact. So that might look like home visits. That might look like positive phone calls home. But how are we going to get that message to all of our staff members? And so just to leave you with this really nice quote from Joyce Epstein from Johns Hopkins, that even when they do not come in person, families come in children's minds and hearts and in their hopes and dreams. Without exception, teachers and administrators have explicit or implicit contact with their students' families every day.
I'd like to add one thing, and that is a plug for our first pow-wow that we're going to be holding, just to beat you, Member Larkin, on the clean, fed, and warm. Our pow-wow will be this Saturday, April 26th, at the Highlander Center. The families that I've spoken to in the community are very excited that we're hosting it. We have a collaborative for American Indian education between Springlee Park, Fridley, and Columbia Heights. And people are very excited. It's going to be held here in the Heights at the Highlander Center, 1 o'clock on Saturday, April 26th. The Grand March will be at 3 o'clock, where all the lead dancers, there'll be children dancers, there'll be food, and there'll be arts and crafts, and some vendors and concessions. So if you have time, I looked at the forecast. It's supposed to be a sunny day, no snow. Come and join us at the Highlander Center to celebrate our elders and our children and the American Indian First Nation people.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments for distinguished panel here?
There's such a lot to take in. I can see, I'm looking forward to see how you're going to get the feedback and do the measurements and stuff, because we're starting to get used to those little charts with the little dial going. Yeah, it's a lot of work. I look forward to seeing that. I actually see that there's quite a few events that actually didn't make it on this list that I'm aware of, like Fine Arts Night over at Highland. There's quite a few things there. Thank you.
I just want to thank you also. You know, one of the, this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. And I've done some research on parent involvement. And, you know, the most effective parent involvement is actually getting involved in the learning process of students. All parent involvement in the schools is useful and leads to achievement. That's what the experts say. But especially it's effective when they're in the learning process and helping monitor homework, helping to be engaged in reading, math, and developing those kinds of skills. So I was pleased to see that that's part of your program. And a lot of it is getting families involved with learning how to be an effective advocate for their students. And I know that that's also part of the REACH program and part of what the initiative is doing. So I think you're hitting on all the cylinders, and that's great. I did want to put a plug in, too, for this precious status software that was brought up before, that this is another way. I've seen a presentation on it, but I talked to Superintendent Kelly about it, is a way to involve parents in the day-to-day learning of students. For example, they'll get a, they can get a message that says, ask your student about Othello today, if they're studying Othello in school. And so they actually know what the program, what the students did all day in their education. So using technology, there's all kinds of, it seems like there's all kinds of ways to do that, to bridge that gap between school and home. And the Search Institute is something I've really tried to look at for research. And I know they've been around a long time. And part of the Search Institute's 40 developmental assets is having parents involved in the student's success at school. So there's another good expert opinion on how to, on the importance of parental involvement. And actually, it's in the statutes. I was surprised to see Minnesota statutes for the mission statement of public schools, 120 8.03, says that public school's mission is to cooperate with students, parents, and legal guardians to develop the student's intellectual capabilities and life-work skills in a safe and positive environment. So right there, it's in state law, how important parental involvement is.
I guess I'm not surprised, but I didn't realize how many things you were currently doing to try and reach our parents and get them involved. I am certainly well-aware of it as a parent, between phone calls, emails, you know, that kind of thing, as far as the different things that were going on. And I guess the one that I do want to touch on that was new this year was It Takes a Village at Columbia Academy. I hadn't thought about it as a parent, how much my parents have been involved in helping raise my children. And when we were invited to that, and I asked them if they wanted to go, they're looking at me like, you know, what's going on? The draw certainly was, or it helped, at least for my parents, as the variety show was going on as well. I tried to pre-warn them that we're going to be 600-plus middle school children in that same audience with them. But they made sure they had seats right up front, so it worked out pretty good. But I, as a parent and having been involved as long as I have, you see some of the same parents over and over. And one of the things that I noticed at It Takes a Village is a lot of parents that I've never seen at some of these events before. So if that's any indication of what you're currently doing and obviously the direction that you're headed, I'm really excited to see, you know, as you gauge and measure, I would not be surprised to see those numbers grow dramatically. So thank you for what you're doing. There's a lot of stuff going on, and you're trying to reach people, a lot of different people from a lot of different angles. And I certainly think that we're working to fulfill that statute as far as, you know, working to make sure we do everything we can to get our parents involved. So thanks, you guys, for doing that.
Of course, I echo everything that everyone else has said. And I wasn't surprised. I knew there were a lot of things going on. So thank you for coming in and sharing with us examples of all the different ways you're helping our parents get involved with our schools. And you guys are on the right track, as far as I can see. And I really enjoyed your presentation, so thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is Bill Holmgren. He's going to tell us about information on the solar panel grant project. Grant and project, excuse me.
Chairman Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I think the school district really has come across as a great opportunity to really put together a nice green project for our community that really benefits the school in the long run. Just to run through, just to touch on our strategic plan, that we are really here to create a world of opportunity for every learner in our school district. And our core values, there's actually three core values that really ties, I think, very nicely to this project we're talking about. And that's really community, collaboration, and of course, innovation. We talk about the different collaboration partners. There's really the state of Minnesota, utility companies, Ideal Energies, and of course, the school district. Every year, what happens is, the state of Minnesota has utility companies put a certain amount of money aside for green projects throughout the state of Minnesota. And in this situation, what it is, is putting a solar grid on top of public buildings. And what we did is, we actually applied for three different grants for three of our buildings. We were awarded one of the grants. There was actually, I think, I should have wrote this number down, it was like 350 applicants for the grants, and they only gave out 100 of them. So we got one of them. We are an alternate on our other two sites in case someone can't get their project taken care of. But for right now, we have been granted one project to put on Columbia Academy. They came out and studied our areas and seen what sunshine was going to hit our buildings when. You can see that, of course, the summer will generate a lot more power than in the wintertime, mainly because of the sun angle. But, so we were very good candidates and they're very excited about working with us. You can see that in, you know, May, June, and July, well over 3,000 kilowatts per hour that it'll generate. And it's not really that huge, huge piece of, you know, equipment. What's really nice about this equipment, it should last at least 40 years. Now, there's no moving parts, so there's nothing that we have to maintain. It just sits there and generates electricity. So it's really a kind of a neat deal. Okay, with the, for what comes from our district, there's actually absolutely zero cost to the school district to put this project together. Through reductions in utility bills over the first 30 years, we'll have credits of about $273,000. And then there's a Made in Minnesota rebate that we receive for the, because the equipment that's going on the roof is made in Minnesota. And that's another almost $60,000 in rebates. And then what we do is, we participate in a power purchase. So the dollars that are generated go to pay for the grid. And that's a bill of $93,000. And then, of course, we have some odd costs and some insurance costs, and that's costs, so that cost is about $9,000. But over the life, well, not the life, but over the first 30 years, we will save $229,000 in electric costs for our district. And this is actually guaranteed. We don't have to worry about not getting this amount of money from the utility company. So what it amounts to is, the district nets approximately $5,700 for the first 30 years. And actually, after that point, technology will change, so we don't know exactly what will happen, you know, when we get out 30 years. But this should last at least 40 years. And at that point, we should be pulling about 20 grand a year after we get past that, after everything's paid off. So I see it as a very exciting project. We're looking at putting this grid together and putting it on Columbia Academy this summer in July. Is there any questions?
Yeah, right.
Well, we try to use every inch of the school district buildings as much as possible, so.
That's right. Well, what we really looked at, too, is we wanted high areas of the buildings that weren't going to be, need to be, anything happened with the move. But these, this actually sits on top of the gymnasium. It's not going to change what we put in that part of the building. The roof is relatively new, so we don't have to worry about changing any roof style. So really, there will be no cost to the school district. Go ahead and get some savings for us.
Well, if this is going to be up there for 30 or 40 years, what happens when we do need to actually replace or repair the roof?
Okay. It's actually very easy to move. If you see that the grid sits on runners, what we do is, we just come up and we put the small wheels that we can put on, you jack it off the ground about that far, and just roll it across to a new area, fix the roof, and then just put it back. So yeah, it'll take a little work to do, but it's not a hard job by any means. I think, you know, when we were looking at this project, both Tom and I were trying to figure out, trying to find out what the negative pieces would be. And we really came down to it, there's really no reason not to do it. It's really a good deal, for the community, for the school district. And we really don't have any costs involved to take care of it.
So you're going to come back in 30 years and give us an update on how it's doing in the next?
Actually, it'd be kind of fun actually to do that.
I couldn't resist. Yeah. Sounds like a good project and try out some new technology.
Yeah, and I'll let you know if, for any reason, we do get the other two as alternates, I'll let you know that.
Can you disclose which sites you were?
Oh, the other site was the high school and then North Park Elementary.
That makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right, this evening, we'll move on to our action items. First action item is discontinuance of reduction programs and positions for 2014, 2015. We have Lindsey Bennett, our Director of Human Resources, and Bill Holmgren. We have Lindsey Bennett, our Director of Human Resources, and Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Back in January, the school board did adopt the resolution directing administration to look at efficiencies in the school district. We have had many staffing meetings with principals and directors. And last week at the work session, we did present to you a tentative resolution. Very minimal changes were made to what was presented last week. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the resolution discontinuing or reducing educational programs and positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies.
Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Laura, second by John. I have the resolution here that I'll read through. Resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions due to enrollment and department, departmental efficiencies, whereas the School Board of Independent District School Number 13 adopted a resolution on January 28, 2014, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13 as follows. Following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. 0.20, .20 FTE license the non-licensed elementary positions. 1.0 FTE licensed student services positions. All teacher positions with licensure variances by law need to review. All teacher positions that were one-year contract, long-term substitute positions. All positions cut for performance. And as was mentioned by Director Bennett, we did discuss this at the work session last week. Any, any discussion on the resolution? Any questions for Lindsey, Bill?
I, I just have a comment. This is, we do this every year. And actually, it looks like our, we're expecting our numbers for our students to, to continue to rise or stay steady, because I, I don't recall us having this little in the way of cuts last, last year. So, I know it's a lot of work that goes into this process. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? All right. Call roll, please.
Palmer.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Landwehr.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Lee, aye.
Resolution has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next on our agenda is National School Board Association membership. Board will be asked to approve membership in National School Board Association 2014, 2015. I see I'm listed as the presenter. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Any comments on this? I know National School Board Association, part of the benefit of doing this is, of course, that the annual convention that they have in different parts of the country. And I know in the past, more board members than now have gone, but I, and I, I believe in most cases, it's been very useful and informational for the board members to go to the, the convention. I know being a member of the, of the convention allows us discounted participation or cost to, to go to the convention, wherever it is. And I know they have a pretty robust website. And they have at least monthly communications, I think, with all the member schools about what's going on in, at a national level as far as School Boards Association. So, it's an advocacy, advocacy group that on and off over the years, we've opted not to belong to for certain years, and opted to belong to in other years, and belong to certain portions and not others, so. And I guess I'll ask Superintendent Kelly, she wouldn't mind sharing a few thoughts on National School Board Association?
Well, I would be happy to. It's really about the school board, so it needs to be meaningful for you, but I'll share for myself that the first couple of years I was superintendent, I didn't feel I had time to go. And then the board actually said, "You need to go." And I got down there, and I was absolutely amazed at, just in, I followed the technology strand. And so I did a lot of the site visits out to the schools. And, and those have been invaluable to me. And I'm thinking about when you get down there, you see how other people, wherever you are, are doing things differently. And many of the things throughout the conference in the area of technology, and I know Ted, you followed one year the same strand I did in technology, we brought back and discussed as a management team and worked on it in the superintendent's advisory. And I found that this time, when we went down to St. Charles Parish, it was another aha moment for me, and we'll be sharing some of our experiences. So, for me, the site visits alone are worth the convention. If I, if I had to pick, although it was an honor to, to, to be down there at all, the site visits were, have always caused me to grow personally.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion on NSBA?
Yeah, I guess I would also say it's great to see the best practices that are going on around the country. And we really don't get an opportu, as a school board, get an opportunity to see that, other than through NSBA. So, I don't agree with their advocacy. I'll be upfront with that, their positions. But the other benefits that we get from them are, are worthwhile.
I just might add, this was the first year that we presented nationally on We Want That Music Program, which was kind of terrifying and fun all at the same time, depending upon your perspective. So, it was, it was really nice to be having other people follow what we're doing here in Columbia Heights.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just make a comment. I mean, we, we certainly are going to be talking a lot about some of the, some of the conferences and seminars that we, that we attended there. But one of the things that I, that I, I got from the conference this year was really the need to have more student involvement in their education, having them be able to take more ownership of it. And that was kind of the thread with a lot of the seminars I went to, we were already doing. So, I'm not sure how much benefit that would have been there. But maybe they did a little bit different, or they used a different form or a different approach. But it was kind of interesting to see, you know, you know, maybe we were ahead of the game, or, or a little bit back, or had taken a slightly different view. So that was, that was pretty interesting. But I, I did notice also that the membership is going down this year.
All right. I was going to mention that. $510.
It's $510. That's, that's a nice reduction, yeah.
More than 10%, yeah.
That was just, I just had a comment, so that.
No, I think, at least for some of the programs that, that you mentioned, I was going to say something, try to be funny, but like they stole the, the ideas from us. But if nothing else, it's confirmation, at least some other groups have looked at it and thought that that was the best practice or the right thing to do. So if nothing else, when, at least when I see things like that, and I say, "Oh, that's what we're doing. We've been doing that for X number of years." To me, it's more of a confirmation that at least we're all going the right direction, or we're going, all going the wrong direction. But at least there are some other people that sort of have the same ideas and same thought process. You know, so you don't feel so much like, gee, you know, are we, are we really doing the right thing? So it's more of a confidence kind of thing, at least for me, so. Yeah.
I, I just, I just know that it's just because our staff is very brilliant, and they came up with the ideas first, and that's the reason.
I'm not downing that a bit, you know, I, I just wanted to be fair to the National School Board Association.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I, I guess in some cases, I, it's like, well, I like the way we're doing it better. You know, and, and I came away with that a lot.
We're biased.
I was trying very hard to take a, you know, I wanted to bring something back that was new and fresh, and like, we got to do this. And so I, I was just kind of going, well, we're already doing it, so, and we're doing it right, I think.
Yeah.
But it was, it was, it was interesting. And I certainly hope that, that we can bring something back that's really going to, that's really going to improve. You know, I mean, we're looking at student achievement, and that's, it's the number one goal why we, we do any of this. And I'm hoping you could see the correlation somewhere. But anyway, that's, I'm still kind of iffy on it all.
Yeah.
I also want to say, we have saved money in the past through the ideas that we have discovered through NSBA. And so, that's a, that's a benefit. Plus, we've improved, I believe we've improved our, our educational program through NSBA ideas, so. I don't, I also want to quantify, I don't disagree with all of their advocacy. Sometimes they, the main thing is school choice. They, they're not as strong on school, school choice as I am. But nonetheless, the benefits are, are there.
All right. Any other discussion or comments on NSBA membership?
I'd like to say one thing.
Sure.
NSBA is also taking a, a turn for education and going on a federal level. And so I think as we are moving forward to look at this, is we have to look at what is going to be affected by our federal government into the public schools. And they are being a huge advocate for public school and public education. So I think we're going to see some real hard changes, and some, some teaching abilities there to school boards across the nation. Also, National School Boards Association is also to develop our own, that's our own stat, type of staff development. To how, it's a learning tool. It's also a networking tool. It's a, it's great to sit on, you know, in meetings with other people and learning that, yes, we are doing the same things. And yeah, we could do some things better, but we're doing, you know, we seem to be stepping the same steps, which I think is what we need to be doing across the nation. So I think it's a, it's a great group, and I, I'm excited to see the continuing changes of NSBA and the continuing information that it brings to all school board members across the nation.
All right. Any further comments, questions? All right. Hearing none. All who have some favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Thank you very much. All right. Last action item on our agenda this evening, board chair election. Just to recap quickly, Mr. Landwehr and I are going for board chair, so. Any discussion, questions? Did you call the roll, please?
Palmer.
Landwehr.
Bardell.
Bardell.
Larkin.
Bardell.
Landwehr.
Landwehr.
Meyer.
Landwehr.
Lee. Bardell.
All right, three to three. Next on our agenda is board topics. We have a school board self-evaluation topic here. One of the suggestions made by one of our board members that, you know, we've been evaluating our, our school board evaluation survey over at, taking one question each time at our, our work-study sessions. And one of the suggestions was to go to the end sort of, and talk about essentially question 12, the trust aspect of it. And I was going to mention it last meeting. I totally forgot, so. That's why it ended up on the agenda this evening, so. Thoughts?
Well, the reason, I'm, I'm as the board member. And the reason I, I suggested is that we've, we've had, we had a conference on, on trust, which was the theme two years ago, I think it was. And we, we received a lot of good information and materials. And we've had comments throughout, you know, from time to time, that trust is an issue with our board. And so, just to improve the, the, I think that's kind of a higher priority topic that we really could benefit as a board. And that's why I suggested that we move it forward in our, instead of going in order, that we bring, bring it forward to next, next month. I think trust will, trust has been shown to be important in board performance, and also very important in, in student learning as a result of a highly effective school board working together. So that's the thinking behind that.
Do you want to move question 12 up in place of number four? I think we're on, we've done the first three, correct? So that, you want to move 12 up?
That's the idea, yep. And there's also, we also had more extensive commentary in the evaluation, if you remember that. It was optional, but we could also include that in our discussion.
That's an option. But the, what we've been doing is going through and kind of talking about how the actual question itself, and evaluating ourselves as far as how effective we are, correct?
Right, but that question 12 was, that was one of the areas that we had more extensive evaluation in, after we did the 12 questions. That's what I'm referring to. We didn't have that with every question that we've.
You're referencing the points to ponder that were optional as part of the
I believe that was what we called it.
Questions that were added, because those, that's one of the two questions that were added when we were approving the, the evaluation. Is that correct? 11 and 12 were added, and then the points to ponder were just that, and we could use them if we wanted to, correct?
I think that's what we called it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any objections? Any thoughts?
Sorry, I'm just reading the,
Yeah.
Just refreshing my memory on all of this.
We're going to cover them all sooner or later, so.
Yeah.
I think we just went in order because it was a number 1, 2, 3, 4, so I don't have any issues with, personally, as far as moving it up.
And also, I think trust is foundational to the other points that we've still need to talk about, or that are on our to-do list, so.
I think I would actually agree with that. No. I think it's a, makes for a good foundation.
All right. Well, no objections, then I would guess.
That would be our next work session, correct? Yep, okay. That's all.
In May.
Yep.
Number four becomes number 12.
Are there any other changes? I mean, that we're going to have to bring forward? Or then we're going to stand by what we had made, that we've owned and have.
As far as.
Well, I mean, this, bringing this up, I mean, maybe, is there any other ones that need to be changed? I'm just asking.
You mean addressed earlier versus later?
Yeah, instead of, you know, two weeks down the road, we're going to switch now 9 to 7, or, are we okay with just leaving it then the way it is?
Well, maybe we could add that when we do number 12, maybe take the time to say, maybe we can look at the other questions and say, "Would you like to see
Yeah.
9 come next," or whatever, and have some, some input in them.
That's a fair point.
I, I personally would like to see the lighthouse study question addressed sooner than later.
I think that would be a point of discussion at a work session.
Okay.
Any other? All right, so, sounds like question 12 it is? All right, any other board topics this evening?
I just wanted to mention, I was also at the principal forum. I just wanted to compliment our kids. We had a lot of kids there that came to support.
Good point, yeah.
And their behavior was, is, was amazing. So thank you for taking the time to be involved in a process that we went through. And the questions I know that came through to me were engaging and interesting. So I really do appreciate the kids in this district.
Other topics, activities to plug?
Should mention the fundraiser one more time, just to warm up Nicole, but I won't.
I wanted to see if you'd get it right. I was going to mention it. I wanted to see if you get it right.
I don't have my, oh, I could if I needed to, with the help of Casey.
And what time is that?
5:08. That part I got right there, huh?
And the school's involvement is, we're going to be having our 7th and 8th grade band, I think, play there.
Yeah, oh, actually, yeah, there's going to be, all I know is, is they requested 40 chairs, so there's going to be, for the musical piece of it. Bagpipes are going to be there. Forgot about that. There's a professional bagpipe group that's going to be playing there. And I also hear Mr. Larkin's guaranteeing good weather, so.
Absolutely. All right. Hearing no other topics, weaken adjourn.
Can I just put in a plug for the musical coming up? I don't think we're hitting it before then.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
The end of the month, was it?
Spelling Bee.
25th.
Spelling Bee, yeah.
Daniel Putnam, Spelling Bee.
Yeah. When is it?